Meeting called to order. Councilmember Chapman.
Here.
Councilmember Clayton.
Here.
Councilmember Kendall.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
We will now have an invocation by Pastor Van Zan.
Happy New Years, everybody. I'm so glad to be able to talk with you and pray with you on this morning. And congratulations to all of those again who I haven't, who I had had the chance to speak to and haven't had the chance to speak to on your election. Let us pray. Gracious and all wise God, we thank you for this day that you have given us another year, another fresh start, another opportunity to do great and glorious works here in the Asbury Park City and beyond. We pray now, oh God, over these officials, for your word says that it is in you that we live, move, and have our very being. And I pray that you empower them and guide them by your spirit. Allow them to operate with your love, that Asbury Park may prosper, may abound in the things that bring a smile on your face and ours. So God, we thank you. Now we pray for the safety of our elected officials. We ask, oh God, that you would shield them from our hurt, harm, virus, and violation. God, we ask that you would give them the strength and the ingenuity and the numberness of mind to operate in a way that is pleasing in your sight and that is beneficial for the residents of Asbury Park and beyond. This is our prayer. In the name of Jesus, I pray that all of us say amen and amen.
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 We will now salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag. To the United States of America. And to the Republic. Which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice. As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 P.L. 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The reorganization meeting notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Crest, the Coaster, and the Star Ledger on December 29, 2020, and posted on the bulletin board the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. We will now move on to the nomination of the deputy mayor.
I nominate Amy Quinn for deputy mayor.
Second Kendall.
Okay, we will now move on to the appointment of the deputy mayor. Resolution 2021-1, do I have a motion?
Move it Kendall.
Second Quinn.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We will now move on to the swearing in. We will start with the swearing in of the deputy mayor, Amy Quinn. Amy, you're going to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
Amy Quinn.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
Say it one more time.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
To the same and to the governments established?
To the same and to the governments established?
In the United States and in this state?
In the United States and in this state?
Under the authority of the people?
Under the authority of the people?
That I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform?
That I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform?
All duties of the office of?
All duties of the office of?
The City of Asbury Park Deputy Mayor.
The City of Asbury Park Deputy Mayor.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Amy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will now move on to Councilmember Clayton. You're going to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Yvonne Clayton.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey?
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
To the same and to the governments established?
To the, I'm sorry.
Same, to the same?
To the same and governments established?
In the United States and in this state?
In the United States and in this state?
Under the authority of the people?
Under the authority of the people?
That I will faithfully?
That I will faithfully?
Impartially?
Impartially?
And justly perform?
And justly perform?
All duties of the office of?
All the duties of the office of?
City of Asbury Park Councilmember.
City of Asbury Park Councilmember.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Yvonne.
Congratulations, eh?
Now move on to Councilmember Chapman. Raise your right hand. And you're going to repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Eileen Chapman.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
And the State of New Jersey?
And the State of New Jersey?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
To the same and to the governments established?
To the same and to the governments established?
In the United States and in this state?
In the United States and in this state?
Under the authority of the people?
Under the authority of the people?
And that I will faithfully?
And that I will faithfully?
Impartially?
Impartially?
And justly perform?
And justly perform?
All duties of the office of?
All duties of the office of?
City of Asbury Park Councilmember.
City of Asbury Park Councilmember.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Marlene.
We are. Now on to consent agenda. We have Resolution 2021-1, the appointment of the deputy mayor, which we have done. 2021-2, a resolution establishing meeting dates for 2021. Resolution 21-3, a resolution designating the official newspapers for the City of Asbury Park for the year of '21. Resolution 21-4, a resolution appointing a deputy city clerk for the City of Asbury Park. Resolution 21-5, a resolution of the reappointment of Joanne Booth to the position of CFO. Resolution 21-6, an appointment of a recycling quarter coordinator. Resolution 21-7, authorizing the city clerk to execute all bingo and raffle games of chance applications to meet the provisions pursuant to the statutes for the '21 calendar year. Resolution 21-8, authorizing the city clerk to execute all of the City of Asbury Park Fire Department members' enrollment to New Jersey State Firemen Association for the '21 calendar year. Resolution 21-9, appointing a fund commissioner and alternate to the New Jersey Intergovernmental Insurance Fund. Resolution 21-10, appointment of an ADA compliance officer and coordinator. Resolution 21-11, designation of a public agency compliance officer. Resolution 21-12, a resolution authorizing premium to E-Sheet to the municipality after five years. Resolution 21-13, a resolution to credit sewer account for de-duct meter. Resolution 21-14, a resolution to cancel taxes on city-owned property. Resolution 21-15, a resolution to authorize year-end tax sale in '21. Resolution 21-16, a resolution of the mayor and council of the City of Asbury Park fixing of interest to be charged on delinquent taxes, assessments, and sewer accounts for the year '21. Resolution 21-17, a resolution providing for fees for tax sale certificate redemption calculation. Resolution 21-18, a resolution establishing a service charge for a returned check or written instrument. Resolution 21-19, a resolution authorizing the tax collector to complete an agreement for service and participate in electronic tax sale process. Resolution 21-20, a resolution approving tax sale costs for '21. Resolution 21-21, a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign NJDEP treatment works applications. Resolution 21-22, a resolution authorizing the tax assessor to act as an agent for the City of Asbury Park for the purpose of filing and settling tax appeals on behalf of the taxing districts for the tax year '21. Resolution 21-23, a resolution authorizing the transfer of real estate tax credits from the year 2020 to '21. Resolution 21-24, a resolution of the mayor and council of the City of Asbury Park designating the depositories whereupon all public monies and other funds of the municipality shall be kept. Resolution 21-25 is a resolution adopting a debt management and capital policy. Do I have a motion?
Move it Quinn. Second Chapman.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We are now on to individual resolutions. I have Resolution 21-26, a resolution providing for the '21, 2021 temporary budget appropriation. Do I have a motion?
Move it Quinn.
Clayton.
Second Quinn.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 21-27, a resolution adopting a cash management plan for the City of Asbury Park. Do I have a motion?
Move it Kendall.
Second Chapman.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 21-28, a resolution appointing Frederick C. Resetto Esquire to serve as the municipal attorney for the city and authorizing the execution of an agreement for professional and legal services associated therewith. Do I have a motion?
Move it Quinn.
Move it Kendall.
Roll call. Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 21-29, appointing Mayor Vidian Falcone to serve as a redevelopment council and authorizing the execution of an agreement for professional service, services associated therewith. Do I have a motion?
Move it Chapman.
Second Clayton.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 21-30, a resolution appointing Archer and Grenier P.C. to serve as redevelopment council and authorizing the execution of an agreement for professional services associated therewith. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Move it Moore. Second Moore.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 21-31, a resolution appointing Archer and Grenier P.C. to serve as bond counsel for the city and authorizing the execution of an agreement for professional legal services associated therewith. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Clayton.
Second Chapman.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 21-32, a resolution appointing Acacia Financial Group to serve as a financial advisors for the city and authorizing the execution of an agreement for professional services associated therewith. Do I have a motion?
Move it Chapman.
Second Quinn.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 21-33, a resolution appointing law offices of Genova Burns LLC to serve as labor counsel for the city and authorizing the execution of an agreement for professional legal services associated therewith. Do I have a motion?
Move it Quinn.
Second Chapman.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 21-34, a resolution appointing law offices of Parker McKay, P.A., to serve as Oprah counsel for the city and authorizing the execution of an agreement for professional legal services associated therewith. Do I have a motion?
Move it Kendall.
Second Quinn.
Chapman.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 21-35, a resolution appointing P.F.K. O'Connor Davies to serve as auditor for the city and authorizing the execution of an agreement for professional services associated therewith. Do I have a motion?
Move it Moore.
Second Chapman.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 21-36, authorizing the award of a contract to the firm Kyle &amp; McManus Associates LLC to perform professional affordable housing planning and/or consulting services. Do I have a motion?
Move it Clayton.
Second Quinn.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 21-37, a resolution appointing T&amp;M Associates to serve as a municipal engineer for the city and authorizing the execution of an agreement for professional engineering services associated therewith. Do I have a motion?
Move it Kendall.
Do I have a second?
Second Quinn.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
To Resolution 21-38, a resolution pursuant to NJSA 40:48-1, authorizing the city engineer to perform services designated to the city manager for review of development permits in any area of special flood hazard. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Move it Kendall.
Do I have a second?
Second Quinn.
Second Kendall.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 21-39, a resolution appointing city prosecutor, James Butler Jr. Do I have a motion?
Move it Quinn.
Move it Kendall.
Second Quinn.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 21-40, a resolution appointing alternate city prosecutor, the firm Grace Mamaro &amp; Associates. Do I have a motion?
Move it Quinn.
Second Chapman.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 21-41, a resolution appointing city public defender, Ronald J. Tropoli. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Move it. Second Clayton.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 21-42, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Asbury Park to enter into a professional service agreement with Public Resources Advisory Group for the provision of pilot RAB administration. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Move it Moore.
Second Quinn.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 21-43, I'm looking for a motion to table amending a resolution, amending a resolution contract authorizing Clark, Kitten, and Hinz to perform various actions from the master plan, and this is a motion to table.
Moore moves the table.
Second.
Second Kendall.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution tabled. Resolution 21-44, a resolution approving an agreement for service contract with Rock Industries, Inc., doing business as NJTaxlingInvestor.com for internet-based electronic tax sale processing. Do I have a motion?
Move it Quinn.
Second Chapman.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 21-45, a resolution awarding of professional community nursing services for the City's Department of Social Services, January 1/21 to December 31/21. Do I have a motion?
Move it Chapman.
Second.
Second Kendall.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 21-46, a resolution appointing Harry Hofshauler Esquire to serve as special tax counsel for the city and authorizing the execution of an agreement for professional legal services associated therewith. Do I have a motion?
Move it Chapman.
Do I have a second?
Second Moore.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 21-47, appointing G.Gem Insurance Agency to serve as an insurance broker, consultant, risk manager, and authorizing the execution of an agreement for professional services associated therewith. Do I have a motion?
Move it Chapman.
Second Quinn.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 21-48, a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement for professional appraisal services to B.R.B. Valuations, Pamela Brodowski, M.A.A.S.A.C.T.A. Do I have a motion?
Move it Chapman.
Second Clayton.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 21-49, a resolution appointing various firms to provide architectural services for the city and authorizing the execution of an agreement for professional architectural services associated therewith, and the firms are DMR and NETTA. Do I have a motion?
Move it Quinn.
Second Chapman.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
On to Resolution 21-50, a resolution authorizing appointments to the Asbury Park TV Committee, and we had Ed Salvis and Michelle Gladon with terms to expire on 12/31/23. Do I have a motion?
Move it Kendall.
Second Quinn.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes. Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-one dash fifty-one, a- a resolution appointments to the Business Advisory Committee, and we have Deputy Mayor Quinn, Jen Hampton, Bianca Frida, Kathy Kelly, Marilyn Flaschback, Russell Lewis, Reggie Filmon, Jackie Sharp, Phyllis Mafucci, Sylvia Sylvia, Austin Leopold, Jamie Soto, Robbie- Robin Elliott Preston, Ben Ross, Chris Dorsey, with terms that will expire on twelve thirty-one twenty-one. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Kendall.
Second, Clayton.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-one dash fifty-three, resolution authorizing appointments to the Code Enforcement slash Quality of Life Committee, and the names that I have are Mayor Moore... Wait a minute, eh, wait a minute. No, wait, wait.
DDBG next.
Uh, wait a minute.
Yeah, uh, Melody, you skipped fifty-two.
I skipped fifty-two. Let me see something. I lost my name. Um... Wait a minute, just give me a second, okay. Um, a resolution appro- approving appointments to the Community Development Block Grant Committee, and the following names that I have are Mayor John Moore, Deputy Mayor Amy Quinn, Cassandra Dickerson, and Lisa Floyd. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Move it, Kendall.
Second, Quinn.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-one dash fifty-three, a resolution authorizing appointments to the Code Enforcement Quality of Life Committee, and the individuals are Councilmember Clayton, Councilmember Chapman, Norman Robertson, Greg Hopson, Patricia Vanello, Eileen Schwaber, Tara Gorfie, Diane Shelton, Noreen Curry, Pamela Major, Karen Kircher, with a term to expire twelve thirty-one twenty-one. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Kendall.
Second, Quinn.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-one dash fifty-four, a resolution authorizing apo- uh, appointments to the Deal Lake Commission, and the individuals that we have are Jeannie Tower and Ed Winder. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Chapman.
Second, Kendall.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Count- Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-one dash fifty-five, authorizing appointments to the Environmental Shade Tree Commission, and the, uh, appointee is Roy Helfrich as alternate number two. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Quinn.
Wait.
Second. Second, Quinn.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-one dash fifty-six, a resolution approving appointments to the city of Asbury Park Green Team, and the appointees are the city manager or designee, director of planning and redevelopment or designee, chairperson of Environmental Shade Tree Commission or designee, chairperson of the Asbury Park Business- Business Committee or designee, Councilmember Chapman or designee, Irina Gasfran, Yvonne Adams, Derek Minnblum, Michael Castellano, Tara Gorfie, Russell Lewis, Kathleen Mumma, Diane Pettit, and Joe Grillo, with a term that will expire on twelve thirty-one twenty-one. And now on to a resolution authorizing appointments to the parking...
We have to vote.
Vote on it.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Kendall.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-one dash fifty-seven, a resolution authorizing appointments to the Parking Advisory Committee, and the appointees are Mayor Moore, Michael Manzella, Jean Delo, Barbara Cryzac, Maggie Quentin, William West, Brett Morgan, Jordan Modell, Jill Potter, with a term to expire on twelve thirty-one twenty-one. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Quinn.
Move it, Kendall.
Do I have a second? Roll call, Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-one dash fifty-eight, a resolution appointing members to the Wesley Lake Commission, and the appointees are Eileen Chapman, Gail Rosewater, Tila Zinski, the superintendent of public work, we have Edward Lacome and Jen Schirn. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Kendall.
Second, Chapman.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-one dash fifty-nine, a re- a- a resolution appointing members to the Public Arts Commission, and the appointees are Jennifer Hampton, Michael Sedano, and Charles Trot, with a term to expire on twelve twenty- on twelve twenty- on twelve thirty-one twenty-three. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Clayton.
Second, Chapman.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-one dash sixty, appointing members to the Planning Board, Class Three and Class Four. Uh, the appointees are, um, Councilmember Clayton is hereby appointed to serve as the Class Three member, and the Class Four members are Rick Lambert with a term to expire twelve thirty-one twenty-four, Jim Henry with a term to expire twelve thirty-one twenty-four, Alexis Taylor with a term to expire twelve thirty-one twenty-four. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Move it, Kendall. Second, Kendall.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-one dash sixty-one, appointing members to the Zoning Board of Adjustment. The, uh, appointees are Russell Lewis with a term to expire twelve thirty-one twenty-four, Wendy Glassman with a term to expire twelve thirty-one twenty-four, Timothy Zylak with a term to expire twelve thirty-one twenty-four.
Move it, Quinn.
Second, Chapman.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-one dash sixty-two, a resolution approving appointments to the Mayor's Wellness Committee, and the appointees are Mayor Moore, Michael Manzella, Lisa Lee, Wendy Glassman, Allison Circo, Vic Sud, Douglas Eagles, Nina Sum- Sub- Nina Summerlin, Pamela Major, and Kate Platt, with a term to expire twelve thirty-one twenty-one. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Move it, Kendall.
Second, Chapman.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-one dash sixty-three, appointments to the Recreation Advisory Committee. The appointees are Councilmember Kendall, Councilmember Chapman, Esther Pragorsky, Toran Jordan, Angeline Brown, Angela Anderson, Doug Eagles, Jesse Ricks, Sylvia Sylvia, Vic Sud, Byron Young, Tyrone McAllister, and Shawna Gartell, with a term to expire twelve thirty-one twenty-one. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Kendall.
Second, Chapman.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Council- count, uh, Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Moore, uh, Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
And Mayor Moore?
It's a long meeting.
It sure is.
You're doing great, Melody.
Yes, you are, Melody.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-one dash sixty-four, a resolution authorizing appointments to the Sunset Lake Commission, and the appointees are Chester Bowles, Sam Berzak, and Councilperson Chapman, with a term to expire on twelve thirty-one twenty-two. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Quinn.
Second, Chapman.
Second, Kendall.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on, we're now on to the announcement by the mayor of Mayor Moore's appointment to the Library Board Committee.
Okay, the library board appointments are, uh, Kerry Martin's being reappointed for a five-year term which expires December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five, and Erica Uter is being appointed to an open position that term expires, uh, December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two.
Thank you, Mayor Moore. We are now on to the announcement by Mayor Moore of his appointment to the position of Office of Emergency Management, OEM Director.
Just thank you, there would be the reappointment of Garrett M. Garberson.
Thank you, Mayor. We are now on to the announcement of Mayor Moore's appointment to the Planning Board.
The class-one member would be myself, John Moore, and the class-two member would be Michael Manzella, both three appointments.
Thank you, Mayor Moore. We're now on to comments from councilmembers. We will start with, um, Councilmember Chapman?
Um, yeah, did we do zoning board? Did I completely miss zoning board?
We did zoning board.
You did.
I don't know.
We did it. We did it. We did it.
I was asleep during that one. So I just want to wish all of you and your loved ones a very healthy, happy, and prosperous new year. I want to thank all of you who supported us in our campaign. It's been a tough year, but we're working really hard to make Asbury Park the best of cooking. Um, I want to thank my family for their support and sacrifices. Often when there's things going on in City Hall, I miss some, uh, really important family occasions, and, um, last but not least, I need to thank my husband, today's our anniversary, and I need to, uh, thank him for his support, and wish him a very happy anniversary, Tom. That's it, I look forward to working with all of you through the year. Thanks, everyone who agreed to work on boards and commissions. Really important to have your input. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Clayton?
Um, I just want to thank the residents who continue to support us, and thank you for asking us and letting us lead you again going into the future, and it's a special appreciation to all of our city employees who kept the city going through the last year under really difficult circumstances, and I want to say to my fellow councilmembers, I appreciate you all. It has been a pleasure working with you. I look forward to the future of what we can do to make this city just a wonderful place for everyone. And last is, I'm looking forward to the future. I think that twenty twenty-one is going to be a turnaround year for us. I think there, you know, our businesses are going to come back, that jobs are going to come back to the city, and most of all, we're going to recapture our joy. So, Happy New Year, everyone, and here's to a upcoming wonderful new year.
Thank you. Councilmember Kendall?
I'd like to just thank everyone too, especially the councils, but I also want to give a big shout-out to the residents of Asbury Park. Uh, most of the time you, um, don't understand us, or understand a lot of things that we do, but the respect that you showed when you called in or came to a council meeting, and it was very helpful to a lot of us. Um, I like to just, but the council, I tell you, is working hard, and you can really count on the coun- as councilmembers of Asbury Park. Um, thank God for each and every one of you, hey, you guys have helped me tremendously as become a better councilperson, and I continue to try to do the best I can, and happy holiday, and please stay safe and wear masks. Bye-bye.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Um, you know, ditto to everything that, that's been said, um, that's already been said, and, and I, and again, it's truly an honor to serve on this council. It's an honor, um, um, to be deputy mayor, it's an honor to serve the residents of Asbury Park. Um, you know, twenty twenty was a, was a tou- tough year, looking, looking forward to hopefully a slightly less tough year in, in, um, in twenty twenty-one, and I, I want to, um, give a shout-out to, um, Donna and Mike Manzella, who, um, have been at the reins during what was the toughest year, um, that I remember, and, um, and, uh, Donna was, uh, really brand spankingly new, um, when, when, um, when all of this happened. So, so not only, um, a- am I really proud of this mayor and council, I'm really proud of the, um, leadership that we've seen in City Hall with Donna and Manzella, and thank you to all of the residents of Asbury Park, um, for everything that you've continued to do during this pandemic and that you continue to do in the city. That's it.
Mayor Moore?
Uh, thank you, and I'd like to thank Pastor Van Sant, I'd like to congratulate Deputy Mayor Quinn, uh, Councilmembers Clayton, Councilmembers Chapman, uh, again, congratulations. Twenty twenty-one is here and it's new, but unfortunately COVID is still with us and it's going to be with us for a while, there's no question about that, so I ask all to please stay vigilant, I ask all to continue to wear a mask, it is basically the only thing working, and it continues to work. I ask all to be, continue to be safe, and I wish everybody a happy new year, uh, again, as everybody else, I just hope twenty twenty-one is better than twenty twenty. Thank you.
Comments from the city manager?
Thanks, Melody. Excuse my voice, everyone, if I don't come across very clear. Uh, first of all, Mel, thanks for doing this meeting, you're doing a great job. Um, I'd like to start off by thanking, um, the mayor and council for all of their support that they have given myself and our, uh, staff here throughout this crazy year. Um, one of my employees recently sent me a text with hashtag teamwork in it, and I think that resonates throughout not only our staff, our council, but our residents and all our volunteers. We need to have teamwork to get through the next year, to, to figure out what is best for our city, for our community, and I appreciate everyone's assistance and guidance, and the ability of all of us to change the way that we've done things in the past, to do things better and more efficiently in this changing time. So, Godspeed to everyone, um, Happy New Year, and looking forward to a productive and, um, safe twenty twenty-one. Thank you.
Comments from city attorney? Uh, not hearing any comments from the city attorney, we will, um, now move to the public...
Sorry, Melody, I was muted.
That's okay, go ahead.
Okay, I'd just like to say happy holidays to all and Happy New Year, and it's an absolute pleasure to work with all of you, and I thank you so much for the opportunity to be together again in twenty twenty-one. Best wishes to all for a better year ahead. Thanks again.
Thank you. We will now move on to the public participation portion of the meeting. Members of the public may participate by dialing star nine on your phone to raise your hand in the Zoom meeting, or use the raised hand function. I will call your name or the last four digits of your phone number when it's your turn to speak. Please state your name and address for the record, I will give you a warning when you have one minute remaining. Do I have a motion to open the meeting to the public?
Move to open.
Move it, Kendall.
Second, Quinn.
All in favor?
Aye.
The meeting is now open to the public. And, um, let's see. Uh, members of the public, if you'd like to be heard, you need to raise your hand. Um, I am not seeing any hands raised. Um, motion to close the meeting to the public?
Move it, Kendall.
Move it, more. Second, Quinn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The meeting is now closed to the public. Uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Move it.
Thanks, everybody, great job, Melody.
All in favor?
Good job, Melody.
Thank you, Happy New Year, everyone.
Happy New Years, everyone, stay safe.